Vice Chair of the Franklin Township Planning Board. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicants, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can provide, can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. We have one hearing here today. We'll go next into the sunshine law, which I've done, then the pledge of allegiance. We have an oath of office, reorganization, roll call, minutes, resolution, discussion, public comments, and a hearing. Right now, everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all.
All right. How are we going to handle oath of office?
The oath of offices were already done as they were coming in, so all of the members have, they are allowed to be on the board right now.
Thank you all.
Yeah, he was probably appointed last night, so perhaps he hasn't been informed yet.
Thank you all for continuing to serve. Next, we move into reorganization. We will need a nomination for chairperson, vice chairperson. Let's start there first. So nomination of a chairperson.
Mike Orsini for chairperson.
I'll second.
We should ask if there are any other nominees.
Any nominee, any others? Seeing none, no?
To close them.
Second.
Okay.
On your favor?
Yeah, you can do that.
Aye.
Oh, we still want to go roll call?
You want to do roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Mahia Rafik?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we move on to nomination of vice chairperson.
Nominate Charles Brown.
Seconded.
Is there any other nominees?
Any others?
Move to close nominations.
Seconded.
Just let the record show that Sammy Shabon is here at 7:35, please. Okay, so Sammy, we're at the point where we're just nominating a second vice chair. Do you have any nominee that you wish to pose since you weren't here? Charles Brown?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay, just making sure since you just sat down. Okay, so we're voting now for the vice chair of Charles Brown. Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Mahia Rafik?
Yes.
You can vote for yourself, right?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Thank you all, and Happy New Year. Now moving on to board attorney interviews.
So, yeah, this is the kind of same process we've done. There was an RFP sent out. There were two proposals submitted. The relevant parts of that proposal, of those proposals are before you, including the qualifications and the cost proposals. We only have one person here for the interview. Peter Vignolo of Clarkin and Vignolo. So the board has any questions of Mr. Vignolo.
Are there any questions? He's nervous. Are there, are there any questions?
I have a quick question. Why is it that we don't get more people that apply for that?
I couldn't answer that. I honestly, I don't know. I mean, they go out for RFP.
No disrespect to Peter and his firm, it's just it's always good to have, you know, to choose from.
Well, there were, yeah, there was another firm.
No, I know, but like in terms of-
But in the zoning board, they received three. I honestly, I can't, I can't answer to why there aren't 20 firms-
Give me an answer generally. Because generally boards, there's a certain inertia to boards. You get someone and they tend to stay someplace until they do something to give you a reason not to want you there anymore, so.
You guys have done a great job. There's no disrespect, it's just more, just understanding.
I'm not taking offense, it's fine.
I was going to say, Peter may be better, since you respond to proposals, better able to answer that question than I can. I have no idea why people don't reply.
You're not an anomaly in that regard. So in lots of other places where I put in RFPs, you don't, you don't see any. I can tell you, I'm the borough attorney in Milltown, and our planning board attorney this year decided not to want to put in an RFP response and didn't tell anyone, so they had no responses.
Oh, how?
So, I mean, so it's, I mean, you know, so even, it's not crazy to think that you get one or two, because more than one is generally something that's not even common.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Well, in the spirit of the new year, can you tell us what you've appreciated most about being our board attorney?
I enjoy the variety of types of applications I get here. I enjoy working with a planning board. I'm a planning board attorney only in one other place, which is Plainfield, New Jersey. And I like the types of applications and the diversity of land uses that you have here because you're such a large municipality.
Is there any recommendations you have where we can make this process better for the people at large?
Generally, no. You have a very good professional staff that handles your applications well and brings them in, and you are a board that vets your applications. And I can tell you that one of the things when I interviewed for this position, or at least had a conversation with your chairman a number of years ago, you bring forward pretty much a fully developed plan to the board at the time it's heard. Some of the other places I work will try to engineer the plan at the board hearing level, which I don't think is terribly efficient, can lead to confusion, and usually takes longer. So I think frankly, for the time being, you do a good job, and certainly if I think of anything, I will pass it along.
All right. Mets or Yankees?
Red Sox.
Red Sox? All right, I don't think that's going to go over well.
All right, so really, I enjoy talking to you guys.
I vote to deny.
Perhaps that's the question we leave you with next time.
You may want to put that as a response in your RFP. It'll make it easier, yeah.
One more try. Giants or Jets?
Don't do that to me.
All right, don't say Patriots, don't say Patriots.
Why? You're a Jets fan, Eric.
All right, thank you. So in order to do the appointment of the board attorney, we do need a motion, correct?
I would move that we reappoint the firm of Clarkin Vignolo to represent us during the coming year.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you want to do roll call on it?
Up to you guys. It's brothers.
All right, it's been moved probably second, and all in favor, motion carries. Now let's move to the witness oath. Director of Planning, Mark Healy.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you will provide during calendar year 2024 will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Okay, great, thanks.
That's it?
That's it.
Which one, Mark? Yankees or Mets?
I really don't watch baseball.
That's not a good answer.
Is that better or worse?
No, that's the worst answer. It's okay, we accept you, Mark. We accept you. All right, we have roll call.
Yes, that is correct. Now that everybody's in, Bob LaCour, who Mark had said was just appointed last night, perhaps he didn't know to come tonight, so we're going to mark him absent. And Jennifer Ragnar and Chairman Orsini asked to be excused. So councilman in Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Sammy Shabon?
Here.
Mahia Rafik?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you all. Now moving on to the regular minutes, September 20, 2023. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
This is September 20th.
Those are the ones that you asked for changes to be made, so I put the changes in the new packet.
Okay, because I think what I have, what I have in front of me does not have the change made. Just to explain to everybody, if you look at the second paragraph of Mr. DeLuca's initial statement about the Jane Center, the last sentence reads, "Mr. DeLuca stated that the item of relief that was now included in the renotice was a relief from a condition to not realign the driveway which the archway would appear over." And I think that the, what we really meant was the condition to realign the driveway.
Yeah, we did say that. That's correct.
I asked that that changed me, the word "not" should be removed.
Yeah, we wanted it to align.
That's correct.
Case any, but I think you, I didn't check it, but I think you emailed the revised version to everyone. I didn't look to see that the "not" had been removed there.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure.
But I just thought I should, since it's rather unusual, that I should explain. And I think you can see that it's a rather important word.
This is-
Yeah, fine, that's-
I had printed out the revised ones, and that's what I have here.
Yeah, okay, good.
So the ones we're approving are the revised ones?
Yeah, well, I have the revised ones, the revised ones that Christine, subsequent to, do not include the word "not."
Got it, good.
All right, so the motion that was stated is in the spirit of the revised version, not the version that, that are in hand currently. All right, so we did have a second. You were going through-
Yeah, I just called Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Okay. Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Mahia Rafik?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, so we have resolution. Think this is Ballas.
We have minutes from November 1st, and there's only four people who can vote on that.
Oh, it's not shown here.
Those were emailed, I think.
Yeah, those were, sorry, those were emailed at the, oh, the reason they're not on here is because they were just emailed yesterday. If no one has a problem, then we'll vote on them. Nobody got back to me, but I do like to make sure because it was very short time. Does anybody, Ted, did you have a chance to look at them?
I didn't have a chance to look at them.
Would you prefer not to vote?
Well, I should have looked at them after this one, but-
If you, if you would prefer not to vote, we don't have to. That's, again, why they're not on here, because if you, nobody, if there's one objection, then I'd rather wait until next time to vote, so.
I'd rather wait, and I suspect that there may be others who haven't had a chance to look at them.
Sounds good, no problem.
I think it would be safer.
Okay.
All right, there are no others, right, Christine?
No.
All right. Let's move now to resolution. Ballas Realty LLC, PLN 22-00009.
There's only four people who can vote on that. Councilman in Barson, Ted Chase, Robert Thomas, and Rebecca Hilbert.
Move the resolution.
Yeah. I have a erection on page three, under B, where it says driveway with 36 feet permitted. The printed copy here says 55 feet proposed, and everywhere else in the application, it's 45 feet.
Okay, so we'll-
I think that's just a typo, probably. I think it ought to be fixed.
Okay, so in B, it should say 45 instead of 55?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make that change on it before I send it to the county.
I'll move the resolution with the change.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Ted Chase?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now we move on to discussion. Barbecue Tonight LLC, PLN-19-0005, for an extension of time.
Good evening, board members. I am John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden Foley Vignolo Hyman and Stahl, here on behalf of Barbecue Tonight LLC, seeking an extension of time. The reason for this extension is we were working final approval out with the Department of Transportation, and that has been done, and now the only required task is to sign the plots and have them recorded. So that should happen in a number of weeks, but obviously we'll be seeking the statutory one-year extension of time.
I move the approval for the extension of time.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one oppose?
No.
Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck with the DOT.
All right. At this time, we're going to open it up to public comments on general planning matters. Can I get a motion?
Tom moved. Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. It is now open to the public for general planning comments and questions. Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public comment portion of the meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. Now at this time, we're going to have our only public hearing tonight, which is the Jane Center of New Jersey, PLN-23-0011, where the applicant seeks site plan and signed variance approval for a construction of an entrance, archway structure across the entrance/exit drive which connects to Cedar Grove Lane at 111 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, block 468.07, lot 45, in zone R-41, 40.
Charles, just real, real quick, did you announce the carrying of 500 atrium?
Right. 500 atrium has been carried to May 1st, 2024, with no further notification needed. Hopefully, no one is here. All right, let's carry on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Again, my name is John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden Foley Vignolo Hyman and Stahl, here for the applicant, the Jane Center of New Jersey. As Mr. Vice Chairman stated, this is application PLN 23-0011. We're seeking amended site plan approval with, with a signed variance. The property is located at 111 Cedar Grove Lane, block 468.07, lot 45, and it is located in the R40 zone where houses of worship are a permitted conditional use. Currently existing on the property is a house of worship, the Jane Center of New Jersey. We previously appeared on this application on three occasions, so this is our fourth appearance. The first being on June 7th, 2023, where we were carried without notice, for lack of quorum. July 26th, 2023, we were carried without notice because the board determined that we needed to notice, oh, with required notice, because the board determined that we needed to notice for relief of condition, the driveway that was mentioned earlier when you were speaking about the minutes from September 20th, our next appearance, where we were carried with notice at the applicant's request. We wanted to hold off on a vote so that we could provide more testimony and look further into the history of this driveway issue. So I know the board's familiar with this application. As I just stated, this is our fourth appearance before the board. I know you're familiar with the archway. I'm going to highlight the issues with the archway. I wish that my engineer could be here tonight, Mitch Arndman. He was supposed to be here, but he had to step out on a personal matter, so he will not be providing testimony, but his testimony was provided in totality, and we're really going to focus tonight on is the realignment of the driveway or our request to not realign the driveway, and I'll explain why, with the help of several witnesses, why we believe that's appropriate. So first, I'll just summarize the proposed archway. So as you can see on the screen, this is an exhibit that was submitted with our application and presented to the board previously by our engineer, Mitch Arndman. So I'm showing the archway here. Oh, now this is harder than it looks. Okay. So there, there you can see, that's how the archway will appear, you know, slightly onto the property. So a little bit about the dimensions and the purpose of the archway. So the archway will display six signs. Initially in Mr., initially in the TRC report, it highlighted that it would display three signs, but it was later determined through testimony that there'd be three signs on either side. So you see the three signs depicted, it's one across the top, and it's two at either base. And then that's mirrored on the opposite side, so one side facing the street and one side facing the building, that is the Jane Center. So the sign at the top, or I should say, the entire archway will be 56 feet wide going over the driveway and 28 feet high. It's set back 41 feet, or will be set back 41 feet from the property line and 50 feet from the curb line. The top sign across on both sides would be a 7, a 57.2 square foot sign, and then the four at each base would be a 21 square foot sign. And then we're proposing a couple of other improvements on the site not related to the archway. One of them will be a four-foot sidewalk along the township right-of-way, along Cedar Grove Lane. It'll have handicap ramps. We're proposing to add a stop bar and stop sign by the ingress and egress of Cedar Grove Lane, as well as increasing the curb cut for turning radii. A couple of landscape modifications, trees and shrubs along Cedar Grove Lane, as well as several evergreens and deciduous trees near the rear of the site for buffering purposes. We intend to maintain the same impervious coverage, and the applicant will reduce, and by, the way the applicant will achieve that is by reducing the width of an internal site So for this, for all these items that we propose, all these modifications that we propose, I'm putting before the board tonight, and I've mentioned this in the past, but there's been some confusion, the relief I, that we believe we require is obviously an amended site plan and then a variance relief for signs. That's number of wall-mounted signs, six are proposed, one is permitted, total sign area, we propose a total, based on all the signs that I mentioned, the six signs I mentioned, it would be a total sign area of 188.4 square feet, and, and a variance for, for sign height. And if you're going based off the height of the structure, it's 28 feet as opposed to a maximum of 10 that's proposed. So we had the benefit of reviewing a couple of reports, and I'll get to it, we discussed a lot before this board that a relief of condition is required, and I'm going to go through some of the history of this property and how it's appeared before the board, and we've discovered that it was not a condition of approval that the driveway be moved. There was a discussion of the driveway moving, but it was never a condition of approval, and I will get to that in detail.
Excuse me, though. Your partner agreed to it, and he alluded to the fact that it was part, it was an agreement, and it was a condition of approval.
My partner?
Yeah, Mr. Lanfrat, he was the original attorney.
So Mr. Lanfrat only appeared at that first hearing on June 7th, 2023, where the, where this application was carried because there was no quorum. I was the only attorney that's appeared before this board on this application, actually presented testimony and any presentation of the application.
Not when this was done 10 or 12 years ago.
Exactly, and I will explain, I will explain that, and you're absolutely right. It was actually in, let's see, it was proposed in connection with a resolution. I actually have the exhibit in front of you.
Please move forward your testimony as planned, go in the order in which you were going to go.
Thank you.
All right.
It was, it was in 2013. So, again, we had the benefit of several ports. First, the environmental commission report dated May 18, 2023, that provided no comment. And then there were two TRC reports issued. The first TRC report was May 2nd, 2023, and the second was updated on August 1st, 2023, and its only update refers to this relief of condition, the realignment of the driveway. And if you look at common seven, on page three, it states that the TRC has no concern related to the request of relief related to the alignment of the site driveway. So again, now getting to the crux of the matter, it was discussed before this board, but it was never a condition of any prior approval. The prior exhibits that this board has seen is the site plan that Mitch Arndman presented, several exhibits that were presented, they were marked A1 through A4, there are several pictures. We showed police reports that there were no accidents in front of this driveway. And now before you, you have exhibits that I have marked ahead of time, A 4.1, A 4.2, A 4.3, and A 4.4. And with the help of my first witness, Manon Shaw, we'll go through those exhibits. Do me a favor and just write your name and address down. Just take a seat. If you could raise your right hand for me, I'm going to swear again real quick. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
You could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Mahir Shah. The address is 229 Durham Avenue, Metta Chin, New Jersey, 0840.
Once phone is on, please turn it off. It's from the room. Do you mind sharing the door for us? Thank you, sir.
So, Mahir, what is your position with the Jane Center?
I'm the current president of Jane Center for the last one year.
And, okay, so you've been president for one year?
Yeah.
And have you been, were you involved with the Jane Center before that?
Yes, I was a joint secretary in 1718, and then I was a board of trustee for the last two years.
Okay. So when did you first become involved with Jane Center? Was the first year you were involved?
Yeah, from 2017.
2017, okay. So, and you've appeared with me before this board on this application a number of times, is that correct?
Yes.
So, exactly. Now, after that first time we appeared and we realized that there was an issue with the driveway, you asked me to look into the history.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And we did, the first thing we discovered were all those police reports, right?
Yes.
And we presented those police reports to this board, and they determined that that was not satisfactory. Isn't that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And since then, we've retained a traffic expert?
Yes, we retained the traffic experts to get the latest study report to be present to the board.
Excuse me, as you're going about your timeline, please list dates.
Okay, I will, and I haven't gone into any of the historical things, but I absolutely will.
You're asking him to reflect, but we would like to know the dates in which he's reflecting.
So after, after our appearance on September 20th?
Yes.
I asked you to retain a traffic expert?
Yes, September 20th, yes.
Okay.
2023.
And in the meantime, we submitted Oprah requests to the township, and we submitted Oprah requests to Somerset County, and that was also after September 20th, 2023, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And in connection with, with those, those responses, we heard back from, from each entity, isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay. And did we, did we discover that there was a resolution dated September 6th, 2000?
Yes.
Okay, and that was from this planning board?
Yes.
Okay, and was there a resolution dated March 20th, 2013 from this planning board?
Yes.
Okay, and did this planning board, actually, no, I'm sorry, strike that question. And then was there a letter from Somerset County?
On 2020.
January 29th, 2020?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's get into a little bit of the substance of those applications. So that first resolution from the year 2000, that was for a site plan and involves some impervious coverage and parking stall size, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And now moving forward to the 2013 application, or I should say the 2013 hearing, the application probably was dated earlier in 2012. You were seeking relief for side yard setback, parking stall to accommodate support for solar panels, isn't that right?
That is correct.
And in connection, and, and your engineer on that application was the same engineer on this application, right?
Yes.
And that was Mitch Arden. So is it correct that Mitch Arden submitted a administrative, a, a request for administrative approval to realign the driveway, both to Somerset County and to the township before that prior site plan application?
Yes.
Okay. So as part of his testimony explaining that you, you know, you're gonna do these solar panels and we need a set, we need a little bit of a setback and we need to shrink the parking stall size in order to accommodate the solar panel support. He explained that the reason the site plan appeared the way it did with the driveway is that you already had administrative approval to move the driveway.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what happened with that application, the solar panel application?
Yeah, the solar panel application, we have a bond and a vendor for that and vendor backed out, so we lost the money. And we have called the project because this was a donor's money that we were investing in it to.
Okay, so everything to do with the development in that timeframe between twenty twelve and twenty twenty kind of fell through?
Yes.
All right. And then it, do you, do you recall what the Somerset County letter said in, in twenty twenty? Or can I refresh your recollection if you don't remember?
Now, if you can refresh that recollection, that will be there.
Okay. So this is the, the January twen- twenty-ninth, twenty twenty letter. If you could just read, what, what's, what's the subject line of this letter?
Jane Center driveway realignment, block four six eight point seven, zero seven, lot forty-five, F L seven one seven, colon, zero zero eight, one nine.
Okay, so is, is this letter discussing the proposal to realign the driveway on, that goes out to Cedar Grove Lane?
Yes.
Okay, and what, what does this sentence say, the, the second paragraph for the Somerset County? What, what are they saying, the Somerset County Planning Board?
The Somerset County Planning Board demands this application incomplete until the following requirement have been satisfactory addressed.
Okay, so then the planning board goes on to, to state that there's a moratorium on any construction along Cedar Grove Lane in this year, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do you remember what happened shortly after this date in January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty?
Yeah, February, end of February, the COVID hit and the lockdown has been implemented.
So even though there were continued efforts to, to realign the driveway, and as we discussed it, it wasn't actually a, a condition of approval. It wasn't mentioned in, in the board's approval portion of the resolution. It was just something that your engineer explained and testified to, but it, 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 um, that, that was thwarted by, by, by the COVID pandemic, correct?
That is correct.
So you had a vendor issue with the solar panels, you had the COVID pandemic. Did you lose any funding or finances in connection with this?
We did, we did, and, you know, advance that we have given for the solar project.
Okay, and have you looked into how much it would cost to move the driveway at this structure?
Again, based on what we had done, our initial analysis, it is anywhere between two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what been given, or asked, given by, to us as a primary estimates. There was no formal estimates that is done on this particular project.
Okay. So is the Jane Center in a position to, to move the driveway even if you wanted to at this time?
It's a completely donors-based association, so we need to raise the funds to do this kind of spend that we want to do it in here.
Okay. And do you know whether the approval for the driveway is still valid, given this Somerset County letter?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, I don't believe I have any further questions for you, Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify before he leaves, are you stating that the sort of impetus for the driveway being moved was based upon a recommendation from his engineer, not the board?
That's certainly reflected in the board's resolution describing Mr. Arden's testimony.
Yeah, given your history of presenting before boards, have you ever seen such a recommendation come from what a cost associated with it that didn't result from a discussion of board asking for that?
I have.
You've seen that?
Yes, I've seen that where, especially in, in this situation where perhaps it is more aesthetic to move the driveway. Unfortunately, you know, Mr. Arden is not here tonight.
Right.
He, I, 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 I don't know what the personal matter is, but he testified before this board that he remembered talking about the driveway, but he didn't remember the genesis of that conversation. But if you look at my exhibit A dash four two that was presented and you flip to page two, that's paragraph three B, it discusses, Mr. Arden explained the original driveway went straight out and did not line up with the driveway across from the subject property. And the applicant received administrative approvals from the township and the Somerset, and the county of Somerset for an adjustment of the driveway location. Mr. Arden indicated that the applicant is hoping to complete this construction this summer, which obviously did not occur, likely due to the funding that the applicant was discussing.
And we've had how many meetings since then?
Since, since this?
Yes.
I could, I couldn't estimate that.
More than one, correct?
Correct.
It has not come up during that time that it was not a board condition to relocate the, the driveway, correct?
Yeah, and I, may, may I respond to that in?
Absolutely.
So when we've initially made this application, it was a site plan application, a variance application. We received the TRC report that indicated that the relief we requested was accurate. Then we appeared before this board and the board didn't have a quorum, it happens, so we carried, we carried. Then I appeared before this board with this applicant, with my engineer, prepared to present testimony. And we were told we could not present testimony could, because there was a board member who recalled that years ago, there was a driveway that had to be moved as a condition of approval of this board. It wasn't mentioned in the TRC report, it wasn't mentioned in any other report, but out of abundance of caution, I told the board, well, if that's a condition of relief that was imposed on this property and on this applicant previously, then I, I, I request relief from that condition. And this board determined the notice that you sent out is not adequate. We will not allow you to go forward on this application. So we re-noticed and we submitted Oprah requests and we obtained police records. And we presented testimony to say, this, this might have been a condition before, but it, we, we, we don't believe that it's necessary at this time, and here's why. And it wasn't, it wasn't until, you know, we, we really dug into the weeds and, and discovered that this is not a condition of approval. It, it was mentioned without a doubt, it was discussed before this board, but it was not a condition of approval that was imposed on this applicant in connection with any prior approval. So from a, a legal standpoint, and I, I, I've been wrong before, I could be wrong, but from a legal standpoint, I, I do not believe the relief from condition is a required relief we seek in connection with this application. That being said, if this board determines, that's fine. It maybe, maybe it's not a relief you're seeking before this board tonight. However, it is a condition we intend to oppose if we're going to approve this application. That's within the board, that is within the board's discretion. Now, obviously, I represent the applicant, I'm advocating for this applicant. This applicant won't be able to effectuate its approval if that is a condition, which is why we wouldn't consent to that condition. But we are, we are trying to explain the history of how we got here. We're trying to explain that this wasn't something that was imposed on the applicant. The applicant said, I'm not doing that, I'm gonna disregard it. It, it was something that funding fell through, the, the project was not completed. Maybe in the future, they, they hope to complete the solar panel project, but it would have to be under a new application with new approvals. All, all of the, the deviations from the ordinance would have to be reviewed for new variance relief. So all of the testimony that was before this board in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, related to that driveway, was for approvals that they were never able to follow through on. And it's, again, it's not because they disregarded your authority or, or your direction. It, it simply was a reality of, of the financial condition they were in and then the reality of the condition that the whole world was in in twenty twenty. So that's, that's all to simply correct the record, not to point a finger at anybody and say, you're wrong, we're right, we don't need to do this, give us our approval. It's simply to correct the record.
Understood, thank you.
Just a few questions. So, cause I, I, I know this application, this site's had a number of approvals. So A four one is a two thousand, dated in two thousand. And then A four two is twenty thirteen. Were there any approvals in between those periods?
None that I found, no. I mean, if, if there, again, I've been wrong before, but there are none that, that I came across, none that I saw.
Okay. Did the, the year two thousand resolution references a number of staff reports? And, and the conditions of that approval reference compliance with those staff reports? Did any of those staff reports in two thousand recommend that the driveway align with the entrance?
I would be very skeptical of that because if you look at exhibit A four three, which immediately was prepared by Mitch Arden. This is, this is a, a driveway realignment plan. And it was to educate, my understanding is that it was to educate the board back in twenty twelve about the proposal to realign the driveway. And you'll see that the Somerset County Planning Board references this plan in their twenty twenty letter. So I, I, I would be extremely skeptical that this driveway realignment dates all the way back to two thousand. I really do believe that the genesis of the driveway realignment is July twelfth, twenty twelve. And the last revision of this plan is January twentieth, twenty fourteen. And it's titled the Jane Center driveway realignment, and it indicates that it was prepared by F. Mitchell Arden of the Reynolds Group Incorporated. Who admittedly is not here to.
Yeah, Mr. is, Mr. Arden, yeah, and we're relying, we're, we're looking at testimony of somebody who's not here
Correct.
from ten years ago. So he was, so the resolution indicates that he explained that the original driveway went straight out and did not line up with the driveway across the street. And the applicant received administrative approval from the township and the county of Somerset for an adjustment of the driveway location. So is that, there was an application for administrative site plan approval to the technical review committee?
That is certainly the implication. Based on.
My memory is not perfect, and, and this is not saying it, it, it did or did not occur, but, I mean, I was here with that during that timeframe. I, I don't recall that being an application.
And I, and I think that's, that's what's occurred a number of times with a number of professionals on, on this application. In our, our office included. You know, I, I spoke with Mr. Landfrit, who handled the previous applications. And part of the reason that we can, that I readily conceded and said, okay, if it's a condition of approval, let's go forward, is because Mr. Landfrit said, I do remember something about moving the driveway and couldn't come up with the, the minute details.
Pretty much my recollection of it is that it was discussed, the exact details I don't remember. But the county, and then he said the county of Somerset approved it. But isn't, but what was the testimony, what was the twenty twenty letter from the, did the county, there was an application?
So the, part of, part of the problem with the, the twenty twenty letter from the county, they're indicating that there was a moratorium on construction along Cedar Grove Lane because the road had recently been paved. So I assume people went out for permits. And I, I, I'm not terribly well-versed on, you know, getting the green light from the county on a construction project. But it seems like the county said, hit pause for a little bit unless you wanna put out a bunch of money to fix all the work we just did on this road.
I mean, my, some of this comes back to me a little bit as we discuss it. And my, if there were members of this board on the planning board in two thousand thirteen, my recollection was, at that time, it was asked of the applicant, why haven't you realigned the driveway? Which actually suggests to me that it was previously discussed at the board level and not just something that the applicant wanted to do. And I think that's perhaps why that was reflected on these plans presented to the board, and that's why it was discussed at the board when that solar project.
It, that is.
I can't prove that, but that's my general recollection.
That's not only possible, it's probably likely. However, my entire, my entire purpose of putting this out there is only to highlight the fact that it was never enshrined as a condition of approval from a legal standpoint. And for that reason, it, it, it slightly shifts the board's analysis of whether, do you impose that as a condition? Or is the applicant seeking relief from an existing condition of a prior approval?
I don't think you've disproved the existence of a, a condition. You haven't stated that you've reviewed all staff, staff reports from that time period, have you?
I have not reviewed every staff report from that time period, that, that is correct. However, there's also been nothing to contradict that it is our position. I, I did a pretty extensive, I did pretty extensive research into the history of this property and the prior approvals. And, and the only reference to this driveway is this administrative approval we see. If it was granted through administrative approval, that would imply that it was not a condition of another approval.
Do, do we have anybody from the applicant that could testify? I know you sort of speculated that it could have been because of some, you know, aesthetic reason. But is there anybody from the applicant that could actually verify why they would have wanted to randomly move the driveway?
I do, I do have a, a prior president here, if, if he feels like he has anything worthy to add.
Yes.
Healy question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Healy, just, do, do, what records are available at the township level? Do we have a copy of an originally approved site plan for this? Do we have, I guess, you know, I'm gonna, do we have the staff reports that would have been referenced in that two thousand?
Presume, I mean, we, we should.
Okay, I mean.
And we also, you know, if there was a, some type of administrative approval by the TRC, we should have some record of that.
Okay, I mean, cause.
I didn't think to look for that because I wasn't aware that these exhibits were gonna be presented tonight.
Right, up until the time of the presentation, I don't think anybody here was anticipating that the applicant's position was that this wasn't a condition of approval and that the applicant doesn't really need to provide it. And like, so the exhibits you've prepared tonight, I mean, we were here in September. It's been roughly three months and, you know, this is the first we've heard of it. And I think the township may want the ability to look into what is available to confirm or, or to prove or disprove that condition. Cause frankly, the board thought it was.
Yeah, cause I, I would go further, that we, the last time we were here, you actually said, I mean, I thought there was agreement that there was. And so it's a little bit of a surprise that this is now sort of not something that we're discussing, which is fine. I mean, if, let's set the record straight. So I would like to hear from somebody on the applicant side of why, why would you have made that change?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I could swear, man, quickly, if you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Speaking to the mic.
Jigur Shah, last name is Shah. I'm resident of Franklin Township, one forty Sunnywell Court, Somerset, New Jersey, oh eight eight seven three. Would you mind repeating your question, please?
Yeah, I mean, if you've been following along, basically, there's now the idea that many years ago, that you all decided to change the driveway. Presumably, it sounds like on your own. What was the impetus? Why would you have done that?
This goes back to two thousand twelve or thirteen.
Or even before, probably.
No, no, I don't think so, because in two thousand, we gave an application when we had the land. And then two thousand twelve, we had a certificate of occupancy. So two thousand and twelve, we had a open hour place of worship. And then we saw there's a traffic and if we, we just say, okay, what if we can? So we have two gate at the property, right? One is entrance and one is a fire exit. So we were talking with the fire marshals and said, what if we can make it as a entry from the other way as well? So at that time, the conversation was that if we can expand, it might be good. So it's just, just like, like your home or something, right? You want to do improvement, everybody said newly built two thousand and twelve. Everybody was so excited, hey, what can we do better and all that stuff? So that's why the idea had came in, what if can we expand?
Well, that, that's expansion, but this is not expansion, this is a move.
Yeah, so like, I do not know if you have those paper or not, but when it's expand, it was, I'd say, right now, two lanes, we can make it bigger. And when you make it bigger, it would have come in the realignment of the shopping center in front of us.
I, I don't think that's what's reflected in the plan, though. The, the plan that you guys had submitted was an actual move, it was not just an expansion, like it was actually moving it over.
I, it may, it may have been, I, I have not looked at this. If you have looked at it, that it is a complete shift or make it a little wider as well.
It's a shift.
Okay. So that's why I said.
So do you have a recollection of why it was shifted?
No.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And to the last witness, was the testimony that it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this shift?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the overall cost of the, 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 the whole thing, this project?
It's around, around $200,000. So what we are planning to, as our precedent mentioned, we are trying to raise those money by recognizing the donor on the sign over there. That's why it's important.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But the, the whole cost of that entire bridge, this whole thing, is 200,000?
Yes, around that sort. Because we are going to get the marble and other kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, we are like, informally in a discussion that how can we raise those money? And there might be some people, so any project we do at Jane Center, we try to do because it's all donor-driven money. And they see if we're making a progress and they are excited. So there was somewhat interest. We, we hopefully, that this will help us to drive further in our donation race.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I.
You had something to add?
I think some ways we're kind of circling around the issue. This obviously, the condition as stated, didn't make it into the resolution the way it was supposed to. That's on the fault of us on the board not reading it carefully enough when it was adopted. But you have an attorney who alludes and agrees to the fact that this should have been done. You have an engineer who basically says the same thing. With this facility and the number of people that go in and out of the driveway in busy times, I don't know why you wouldn't want it lined up. First of all, you went through nineteen, 2020, 19, 18, 17, 2021, even, even a couple of years further back, the shopping center there was not very busy. If you look at the parking lot now, it's packed. Your driveway will work as it is now at 10 o'clock on any day of the week in the morning. It will not work when you have your special affairs. And that's an imposition on everybody in the general public as well as your, your congregation. I don't understand the resistance to this simple thing. You don't have to change the whole driveway. You can change the entrance and curve it around to meet the old driveway. You don't have to put a whole entirely new driveway in there. Apparently, it may have been bungled in terms of the paperwork. But your attorney agreed to it. And if you ask him, he'll, he'll tell you he agreed to it. He's an honorable person. That's why we're here. You don't want to do it, we probably can't force you to do it. But what's happening is wrong. That driveway should have been done properly in the first place. It should be done properly now. But if it can't be, it can't be. The one condition that is, as I just read in the latest resolution, is the requirement to have a policeman, police presence there during your special days to direct the traffic. So you can give me all the police reports you want, but they also recognize that there, there is some problems with the driveway when it's busy. I'm not, as I said, talking about 10 o'clock on a weekday morning. Everybody can use it.
May we see the, the quote? Do you have the quote readily available for that? It just seems so high to, to, to move that driveway.
We, we're not prepared to, I, I don't have that exhibit with me. I don't believe my clients do.
Yeah, and I don't think we want to factor costs into our decisions neither.
No, I, I don't, yeah.
Right, correct. So Mark, team, were you prepared at all to state what is factual here? Like, were you notified that this was going to be presented in the way it's presented tonight?
No, I, I.
No one received?
Saw these exhibits when you did.
Okay.
If, if.
For that reason, we should want to set a precedent. We don't want the level of surprise we received tonight where we're both looking like we're having a session of he says, she said. Both parties should be privy to the information. It should have been provided in advance so that we could be prepared as a board to see what is factual and what is not. And for that reason, I think we should carry this meeting to give us time to prepare with the facts that you have, as opposed to arguing what is true and what is not true. We want to do this justice, and to me, that's the best path forward. Do I, go ahead.
Microphone Ted.
We have a problem in that we don't know whether perhaps there was a requirement to move the driveway in the engineer's report or the TRC report. We simply don't know that. If you had brought this up 10 days ago, I think Mark could have found out whether that information is in any of those reports. And we don't have Mitch Arndman here to explain why he prepared that plan. He prepared that plan for a reason, and I don't think he did it off the top of his head. But the other question is, Mr. Thomas has made a very strong statement that the realignment of the driveway is necessary. Now, I'm not a traffic expert. I'd like to hear from Ms. Dolan, who's given us a report on the traffic as to whether, whether the position of the driveway makes any difference from a traffic engineer's point of view. It seems to me the only way we can settle this tonight is if we conclude that moving the driveway is not necessary. Other, if we think that it's still necessary, we have to find out whether there is any documentation that it is necessary. Because it could be in the report, either the TRC report or the report of the engineer from 2000 or from 2013.
But Ted, there's so many unknowns. And one thing that is known for the last past couple of meetings I've been here is that we've stated we wanted the driveway moved. That is a fact. So we don't have to keep revisiting what your experts are going to say. We've heard testimony from the engineer that originally did the design and others. And we've stated throughout that entire period, we wanted the driveway relocated. So what I feel is that we've been done an injustice because we were not prepared. And now it puts us on the defense because we're arguing something that we don't have the records for. And so I believe that for that reason, it should be moved until we're both prepared to have a discussion. Because there's always going to be the thorn in our side, what was said historically versus what had been said in the past couple of meetings.
I, I, I agree with you in part, Mr. Vice Chairman. I think that, I, I'd be remiss if I also didn't state that there has been unfairness in, in both directions. I, I'll concede that this board deserves to be presented with exhibits ahead of time so that they can review them. However, the applicants also deserve to know what relief they need to seek before they are appearing before this board. We did have a report that omitted any relief of condition. And then when we appeared before this board, ready to present testimony on this application, we were blindsided. We were blindsided by a board member, not by the zoning officer who makes the determination as to what relief is required and necessary, but by a board member who recalled back when accurately that there was discussion of, of the driveway moving. And ever since then, this applicant and his team has felt like they're on defense, trying to save this application. So, you know, Mr. Chase mentioned that he did want to hear from the traffic engineer, and then you disagreed with him. So I'm inclined to put on the testimony of the traffic engineer.
Board, how would you like to proceed for? Should we continue and make the assumption that historically, we don't have the facts? I just want to state that we don't know what was said historically. So if we proceed, we're still going to move forward with our position. We just want to be clear there. How do you all want to move forward on this? Continue tonight, or?
I think, Mr. Vice Chairman, in, as much as they presented some exhibits and we have heard some explanation about these exhibits, I think we should give them a chance to present the traffic.
Everyone else?
Let me ask a question of Peter. Just almost procedurally. I can see a situation perhaps where the board moves forward, hears the testimony from Ms. Dolan, and then perhaps stops short of a vote pending some confirmation of whether this really actually is a relief of condition or not. Because I think that's, that, that question, aside from the merits of whether it's going to be realigned or not, again, I, there are some things that, that, I don't know, I personally don't know if they actually need it or not until I go through certain documents. I'd, I would like to go through the reports from 2000. I would like to see, was there any other approval between 2000, 2013? I would like to look at the records of the Technical Review Committee, see if there was some administrative approval. You know, those things, so I can't tell the board exactly what, what approvals they need tonight.
Understood. Well, I, I think, you know, we can certainly let Ms. Dolan provide her testimony. And when we get to the end of it, you know, if Ms. Dolan is, is as good as she usually is, and she convinces the entire board that regardless of whether or not there was a condition, it doesn't need to be complied with now, and, and that driveway should stay exactly where it is, it doesn't make a difference, then the board can certainly act and say, you know, something, we agree with that. And regardless of whether the condition exists, the driveway can stay, we'll move to the sign. If they get to the end of it and they say, you know something, we're not necessarily sure we like that. And we think we want to explore whether the condition is something that was really a condition, then we might need to carry it. And I think that would be the situation where we can allow her to provide her testimony tonight, and that way, we can certainly not have to bring her back at another meeting if, if this were need to be carried.
May I ask a, a, a follow-up question to that? Could we, could we also, if after hearing Ms. Dolan's very compelling testimony, still disagree, could we still make it a condition irrespective of the past, that it is a condition to building this?
Well, the, the problem is your conditions are usually somehow causually related to the relief they're, they're requesting. This is a site plan that exists. It, it's roadway that exists. They're asking for a sign variance. So it's very hard to look at them and say, you'd like to put a sign that's an archway over an existing roadway, and because of that, you need to move the roadway. So I think that's something that if the board wants, we can certainly explore. But that's the, the one issue associated with that. And I'm sure Mr. DeLuca would say, if that condition doesn't exist historically, I don't know how you can causually relate that to the sign relief that they're requesting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, if I can just say, I think we're here. And in the end, I wasn't here for the past meetings in the past years, but in the end, it does come down to the safety issues that we discussed in September. So I would like to hear the traffic testimony. I kind of agree with Ted at the moment, and then, you know, we can explore our options after.
Sounds good. Let's hear the testimony.
So, Mr. DeLuca, just while Ms. Dolan's coming up and getting sworn in, I, I know when we carried this last time from September, there were a couple of other issues that were requested by the board to be explored. One of them was landscaping from, I guess, to the adjoining residential properties behind. There was a question over interconnectivity between the sidewalk running along Cedar Grove Lane and the front of the building. And I, I thought that the applicant was going to go back and explore those. Is, is the applicant not exploring those? Or is, are we just moving on with the sign and the relocation of the driveway? Because they exist in the minutes, they exist in my notes. And certainly, that was something I think the board anticipated might have been addressed tonight, and we don't have revised plans. All we have is the, the exhibits.
Well, given that we've discussed carrying this for a vote. I will see to it that I have the full complement of my team and that Mr. Arndman will be able to speak to those issues.
Okay.
When we reappear. Thank you.
Sounds good. Good evening. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
So what can you tell us about your traffic impact statement, Ms. Dolan?
Well, as long as the board's accepting me as a qualified traffic engineer.
I'm jumping the gun.
Ms. Dolan has appeared many times before this board.
Ms. Dolan, since last you appeared and so qualified, have your credentials been detrimentally affected at all?
No, they have not.
Certainly happy to hear that. Thank you.
My, my last hearing of the, the year was in Franklin. My first hearing of this year's in Franklin.
And before you go into your report.
Yes.
Just to clarify, you're speaking on traffic.
That's right.
And its impact. You're not speaking to the safety in the design of the driveway, correct?
I'm not speaking to the geometrics. I'm speaking to the offset, the associated traffic volumes, and the analysis of existing conditions.
Right, volume of traffic, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I.
Wait, I'm sorry. So I'm not appreciating that nuance. What is it that's not being covered?
Well, I, I think if, if I understand correctly, Mr. Arndman had presented the accident information at a prior hearing. I have not incorporated that into my analysis. My analysis is based on actual numbers and level of service calculations based upon the alignment of the existing Jane Center driveway and the Northern Cedar Grove Plaza driveway.
Not the safety of said driveways due to the geograph, geometric design or realignment of those driveways?
Which is a fact, that is the quintessential question, though, right? I mean, the whole question that we want answered is, is this safer or less safe than to be lined up or not lined up? So I'm just trying to figure out how this testimony helps or doesn't help.
Sure, yeah, I, I think that, well, I, I need to get into my testimony to really answer your question, but I will be rendering ultimately the opinion that the offset as configured does not pose a safety problem or an operational problem.
So you are commenting on safety?
I, in general, yes. As it relates to the traffic volumes and the, the offset arrangement, I will be, yes.
Traffic volumes.
Traffic volumes and, and the, the, the offset with its existing configuration. I'll be speaking to that.
All right, let's go ahead.
We were retained after the prior hearing, and the holidays were upon us. My report was finalized and dated December 2023, 2023, and was based on traffic counts that we performed after Thanksgiving, beginning on Thursday, December 7, and continuing with a Sunday count, December 10, 2023. On Thursday, December 7, we counted to capture the traditional morning and evening peak hours and also after consultation with the Jane Center people, an understanding of their peak operational hours. So in the middle of the week, when school is in session, weather was fine. We counted from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, from 8:00 to 11:00, and that was based on the Jane Center's busiest activity. So the report includes figures that show the peak hours, 7:30 to 8:30, 12:15 to 1:15, 4:00 to 5:00, and then on Sunday, 10:00 to 11:00. The Jane Center is not particularly busy. I certainly concur with the concerns and commentary that when there is a peak event, police presence is needed. That's a common theme with these Houses of Worship in Franklin. And the applicants, based on my experience, are obligated to work with township staff to make sure that the event traffic is not disruptive. And certainly, a, a police officer during peak activity makes sense to me. But what we found during our studies and traffic counts in December, just about a month ago, was a total of 28 trips entering and exiting the Jane Center during the morning peak hour, 18 trips during the midday peak hour, four trips during the evening peak hour, and then 69 trips during the Sunday peak hour. So that's total entering and exiting, and in all cases, less than our 100 peak hour trip threshold that I T E, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and our N J D O T consider significant. At 100 or more trips in an hour, you're likely to start creating an impact. Now, of course, this is an existing use, and we're looking at how that traffic arrives and departs as related to what's arriving and departing at that Northern Cedar Grove Plaza driveway. At the Plaza driveway, and again, they've got access on New Brunswick, and they've got a second full movement driveway further towards the traffic signal. So these numbers that I'm going to speak to now are just at the driveway offset from the Jane Center driveway. 88 trips during the morning peak hour, 211 during the midday peak hour, 107 during the evening peak hour, and 62 on Sunday. And that 62 makes sense because it's a quieter hour, but certainly, peak activity midday and evening when, you know, those, those retail uses, the restaurants, the gym, those uses are generating traffic. And it was mentioned earlier. And it was mentioned earlier about how the site is is definitely active. So so what I think was very interesting, and it made sense to me, was that the shopping plaza activity at that driveway is primarily left in from Cedar Grove Lane and right out. So it's even though it's offset just to the north of the Jane Center driveway, the majority of traffic isn't passing in front of the Jane Center driveway. And that makes sense because anyone coming from the south on Cedar Grove Lane has two options. They can enter the southern shopping center driveway, or they can enter off of New Brunswick. Similarly, if they're going back to the south, or if they're going to New Brunswick, they're choosing those other two driveways. So it made sense to me, based on the shopping plaza layout, that the predominant movements at that northern shopping plaza driveway are left in, right out. And that was during all of the peak hours. If you notice the striping on Cedar Grove Lane, there are left turn lanes striped for the left turn movements into Jane Center, into the both shopping plaza driveways, and also into the newer street, I think it's called Daisy Drive. The way these driveways are offset, the Jane Center driveway is just south of the northern shopping center driveway. So this means that if someone is simultaneously looking to turn left into both of those driveways, they're not locking up or conflicting out on Cedar Grove Lane. They've got their own left turn lanes. The movements into the shopping plaza can happen, and the movements into Jane Center can happen as if they were actually a four leg intersection. If if the shopping plaza driveway was south of the Jane Center driveway, you'd have a real problem because any left turns would be conflicting. You'd basically be having a head on situation, which that that wouldn't work. So how the offset came to be, I don't know. But my opinion and my review of the traffic counts tells me that operationally, the only problem that anyone has is waiting probably to get out of Jane Center when it's busiest. That's a si- a site condition. That's something that is any house of worship, any office that's letting out at the end of the day, you're going to have a queue of cars on the property as they wait to leave. Now, the numbers that we saw for general activity at Jane Center aren't that high. We saw people getting out of the driveway. Did they have to wait if someone was waiting to turn left? Yes. But during those busy peak hours, we're looking at a maximum of 10 left turns at a Jane Center. And that's not worthy of, in in my opinion and experience, never mind a reconfiguration of the driveway, but it doesn't even warrant a two lane approach on the exit from Jane Center approaching Cedar Grove Lane. The the volumes just aren't that high. So it's a site imposed problem, if you will, during busier times at the Jane Center, that people have to wait a little bit longer to to exit the site. That's not so much the case at the shopping center driveway across the street because there's hardly any lefts being made out of that driveway because those lefts can be accommodated at the southern driveway on Cedar Grove or the driveway on on New Brunswick. And there's a traffic signal there. So that gives the shopping center traffic a better ability to distribute so that you have fewer left turns. Jane Center has one driveway. So regardless of the history from from my study and the numbers I've presented to you and the way the numbers play out and the offset that makes sure that there's no overlapping of lefts on Cedar Grove Lane into these respective driveways tells me that there's not a problem with this configuration. I think, sure, if we had a clean slate and we were looking at this, well, why don't you just make the driveways align? So I don't know why that didn't happen or what was or wasn't a condition of prior approval because I wasn't involved with that. But based on the way the offset is configured, there's no lockup or conflict on Cedar Grove Lane, and I think that's the biggest issue. The other issue, no question, is something that I have not been able to study or see simply because I've just gotten involved in the last month. But I certainly concur with the board and am familiar enough with these other applications that if and when there are event activities at the site, there has to be control by a by a police officer and whatever other mechanisms. I know in other applications, we've talked about offsite parking and vans and shuttling and so forth. I don't know the history of of what may have been approved as part of the event activity here, but I would certainly concur that whatever peak event activity is happening here, it needs to be appropriately managed. So there is no negative impact to Cedar Grove Lane. Excuse me.
Your report was for automobile traffic, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
What about pedestrian traffic?
Well, we didn't notice any, excuse me, crossing Cedar Grove Lane. And I know the applicant is proposing the sidewalk along the site frontage, which I don't know the history there either because I kind of came into this late, but that certainly the the theme everywhere I go is pedestrian connectivity and providing that. So I think that that's certainly a plus.
And you stated 28 cars were entering or exiting?
During the morning peak hour, 28.
Was this during service?
So they have limited activity during the weekdays, and the peak activity at the center is Sunday mornings. And that's why we went and did the the Sunday count. And the Sunday was busiest. That had 69 vehicles entering and exiting during the busiest hour.
Roughly how many members?
I don't know the number of members, but I know 960 seats is is what's
That appears to be some discrepancy, right? 960, roughly from the leadership here, how many members would you say attend on a Sunday relative to only the 68 vehicles counted?
Again, this is Meera Shah at the Chin, New Jersey, 0840. About 300 families coming in throughout the day for Sunday.
So how how do we account? What would you say about a Sunday which records only 68 vehicles and 300 families?
So let me try to explain the way the day starts, right? So we have a morning rituals, which is starts at 6:30 to 8:30. So we get in about 15 maximum cars coming in in the morning. After that, we do have a, you know, Gujarati school where students come and learn the native language. So there are hardly about, I would say, 20, 25 cars coming in and out in that. And then there's a religious school after that. So then that's where the 69 number looks like, that people coming in and coming out. And then in the 4 o'clock, we have another small group of people, which is another 20, 25 families coming in for the worship in the afternoon. And in the evening, about three or four cars coming in for the evening rituals. So that's how the throughout the day, we have that many number of people coming in and out, or families coming in and out.
Did do you, so I'm not familiar with the religion, but you know, like for Muslims, there's a Friday prayer. For Christians, there's like a Sunday mass, like the there's like big events throughout the week. Is there something similar and?
No, no, not like that. We only have seven big events throughout the year. And all those seven events, we need to seek for the police help.
Not not on a weekly basis, though?
No, not on a weekly basis, no. We do, again, in our region, we do have a morning rituals, which is like a mandatory thing. And that morning rituals throughout the week is being managed between maximum 10 to 15 families, so.
So, Mrs. Shah, so even though you have 900 members, not all of them are coming at the same time?
Not every day or every week. It will be, as I said, about seven-
Disparate throughout the day.
Seven events throughout the year is what is where you will see the maximum people coming.
So I can I can kind of vouch for what he's saying because I'm Hindu, and I go to many temples. The way the temples operate, it doesn't have a sermon at a specific time that every family goes and attends. These are open door throughout the day. People just go in whenever they please, they pray, they go out on their own, at their own pace. So I can relate to what you're saying, and I can understand the concern the board has, but I think there's a disconnect, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks.
And I think the previous question was been asked that about the landscaping. So we have a we have a meeting dated 17th of December where we have proposed the budget to our general member body members, and they've approved. So we have that project on plate about the landscaping, that what we have talked about in the September.
In the rear, is that where it is?
Yes.
Because that that's where the neighbor came and and was complaining that the lights-
We have taken that into consideration. We put that budget in, and we got an approval on 17th of December, 2023.
Now, in your traffic counts, you obviously counted the the turns going in and out of both sites. Did you also take account of the general traffic passing by?
Oh, yeah, we did. We we included the Cedar Grove Lane through traffic, northbound and southbound. And we use that in our level of service calculations for each of the peak hours.
The level of service you're referring to, level of service making a turn in route in out of the driveway onto the public street, right? And how about factoring? Did you factor in the driveway for the housing development?
Is that Daisy Drive just adjacent, the new ones? Yeah, any traffic that was being generated by that was included in the traffic counts.
Okay, and did you factor in that virtually every day at the peak hour in the afternoon, traffic is at a standstill from the stoplight on New Brunswick Road to Pier Street? Standstill as in barely moving?
Yeah, whatever whatever was happening was counted and observed.
And everything is safe, no matter what?
Well, that the the good thing about Jane Center is that it's generating the the lowest driveway volume during those critical peak-
Correct, and I'm not sure whether the intersection being offset or lined up would make any difference at at that point for that, but.
I don't think it would, the the intersection being the two driveways.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Dolan, I I didn't quite understand your your testimony in one part. So I just just one clarification question. You you said 100 is sort of the threshold, and you said coming out, there's 207 of the of the center, not the Jane Center, but the actual center?
No, I was giving you two way volumes on that driveway. So let me just go back to the correct table, and I can tell you that leaving the northern shopping plaza driveway, the maximum we recorded was 110 exiting vehicles in the and that was the midday, we'll call it the lunch peak hour, and that closely resembled what was happening in the evening peak hour. No, I'm sorry, that that was that was lower also, that was 40. So the highest was 110 in one hour coming out of that northern driveway.
Right. And and what what I didn't quite understand is, because I'm looking at the map here, if somebody's making a left out of the Jane Center and somebody's making a left out of the center, how is that not going to cause an issue?
Well, because the volumes are so low. I I see what you're saying because that is where you have a little bit of an overlap. But if we're looking at 3, 7, 6, and 4 during the respective four peak hours coming out of the shopping plaza, and 10, 3, 0, and 8 coming out of the Jane Center driveway during those respective peak hours, that's not enough to create a a negative impact. Certainly, if this shopping center driveway were the only driveway, if we didn't have that driveway further to the southwest on Cedar Grove, then you would see a heavy left turn egress. And in that case, I would absolutely think that it would be appropriate to align these so that you didn't have that problem. But the lefts coming out of both driveways are so low that I don't find that to be an issue.
And and how do you factor in growth? So all of these centers are very vibrant, and I think this Jane Center from the last testimony is a regional center. It's not a local center. How do you factor in what this might look like in five years or after that? Like, how do we anticipate that part? Because it is a relatively new center.
Sure, that that's that's a good question. I mean, the the normal, the normal way we handle a traffic study for a new use is, okay, what's the projection based on attendance levels, operation? I've handled a few of these in in Franklin as well as elsewhere where we know that it's a random arrival and departure. People aren't coming for like Catholic Easter's, Christmas mass. You don't have that huge arrival at one point and then departure at another. People are coming and going so that it suits their schedule. They go in, they have their spiritual time at the at the facility, and then they leave. So if if we're looking at peak events, we know we need a police officer. If there were some kind of significant growth and or changes in operation that resulted in, for example, on Sunday, a couple of hundred vehicles coming in in an hour or leaving in an hour, I think that then the the applicant would have it in their best interest to hire a police officer the way many churches, you know, have done, particularly during holiday periods. So this analysis hasn't looked at a future because in my experience in Franklin and other places, that would have been done at the time of site plan to project the worst case traffic volumes associated with the intended operation.
Which I think gets to sort of the origin question of like what was sort of discussed at that initial set of meetings? And was this sort of set as a condition? So in terms of your testimony, then, we actually don't have clarity in terms of what this looks like. Were it to grow, you know, there's 900 some odd seats. It's not like we're talking about a small structure. This could potentially balloon into a much larger traffic generator. We we just don't know.
Well, that I don't know but for the special events because I didn't handle the initial application. And I it sounds to me like there's going to be a little bit of research, and there may have been a traffic study. And the one thing I didn't do was check with my partner who handled a lot of Franklin before he and I got together, Gary Dean Associates. I don't know that we have anything in our files on Jane Center, but I'll double check with him. But the the nature of this temple is consistent with many others where, again, there may be all those seats that cater more so to the special event activity, but on a routine basis, you're seeing the numbers like we've counted and shown in this report. Otherwise, I would have to defer to the applicant to talk about future growth and or any changes that might yield higher volumes of what we counted.
Yeah, because to me, that's just a big question. And that left to left is it it seems a very awkward left to left. And if we get a lot more traffic generation, and I think you'd agree with this, that that then would become a problem if we hit a certain threshold number. And so without fully understanding what that future prospect looks like, I just don't know.
Well, to be clear, there is there's no research that shows you have to reach a threshold for the left to left to be dangerous, correct? You're not stating that in your testimony, are you?
There's no threshold, no. From my perspective and having looked at this, it's a twofold issue. One is that the shopping plaza has other access, which means that that left is somewhat self policing. So even though the Jane Center may have more lefts during certain times of the week, that shopping center plaza driveway is not likely to ever produce high left turns because there's two other opportunities that make those lefts out of the shopping plaza much easier than doing it opposite and north of Jane Center.
What about the left out of Jane and the right out of the southern bound shopping center? There's a left heading north and a right heading north.
I'm sorry.
The one near Starbucks?
Yeah.
There's a right out?
Right.
And then from the Jane Center, there's a left out. They're both speeding to reach that lane. Is that conflict something you take into consideration?
Not necessarily. And it's more so because of the striping and the, I mean, the right turn is you that anybody turning left out of Jane Center has to yield to someone who's turning right because they're effectively in the the north bound through volume at that point. So how quickly they come out, you know, if you're at the Jane Center driveway, that's part of your gap acceptance. You're watching to see, okay, that person's at the stop sign, which I don't even think there's a stop sign at that driveway, but that person's getting ready to exit. And if they have their blinker on to turn right, then I'm waiting to turn out of Jane Center, I'm going to wait because they're coming my way. If they don't have a blinker on, I may still wait because I don't know which way they're going to go.
Right.
So but that that becomes part of the through traffic that is taken into that whole analysis. But certainly, that's it's that's a little bit further away. So those vehicles have time to get into the lane before anybody exits Jane making a left turn.
Based on your expertise as an engineer, why do we design with perfectly aligned streets? Why do we try to have intersections?
So you don't have these potential conflicting movements?
Right. And so the movements you didn't study is the volume within the movement that you studied?
Well, it it's 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 twofold. It's the geometry and the offset, but it's also the volume combination. Because I think I said a few minutes ago, if if the northern shopping plaza driveway had a higher left turn volume, this wouldn't work. But the fact that there's another driveway, not only on Cedar Grove, but one beyond the signal on New Brunswick, those two driveways are are the reason why the left out of the northern shopping center driveway is so low.
Got it.
So I I have a question. It's a follow up question to the last time you guys were here. So I had a personal incidence at that same intersection, right? The northern bound and also from the Jane Center and a pedestrian. So it was a perfect storm. So it was a perfect storm. And so what I'd like to ask is from safety perspective, right? I know you're a traffic expert, is at the moment, there's, you know, the traffic, the number of cars is not there. But one fatal incident, that's all it takes. So if you align it, what is the perfect storm for a tragedy to happen, right? This is my question to you. So it's just, I mean, I, I was in there, right? I was in the car making the left turn out of the, the northern side of Cedar Grove. And it, it just, and it happened that, you know, you guys are presenting the case, right, for that. So my question to you is alignment of the driveway versus not aligned?
In, in terms of, of safety?
Pedestrian safety?
Pedestrian safety.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my.
And the cars.
Let me ask a, a question. You, you mentioned that there was a pedestrian and you were trying to make a left. Was the pedestrian crossing Cedar Grove Lane?
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a mid-block cross there, is there?
No.
No, and, and so that, you know, that in and of itself is an issue. And the theory is, you know, when, when these things are designed, is it, well, there's a, there's a crosswalk at the traffic signal. But if you want to cross in the middle of the road, are you looking both ways? Are you, do you have enough gap acceptance to get across? Why are you crossing? What's the, what's the, what's the attraction? You know, so, so that's one issue. And if there's a real pedestrian connectivity need, then that's something to explore with the county. And we're doing a lot of these push-button, solar-powered pedestrian flashing signs in more of the redevelopment areas. I'm in Fanwood. We've got a bunch of them there. They've got them by the schools, Plainfield. They're, they're big on them. So if there's a pedestrian issue that warrants that, that's something to look at with the county. As to whether or not that comes into play with the alignment of these two driveways, I don't think so as much. If you're asking, would it be potentially safer to align them in terms of that left turn overlap coming out of the two driveways? In this particular case, I'm not so sure. But overall, to I think the, the vice chair's comment is why do we align driveways? We align them so that we have fewer conflict points along the corridor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just one more question, because you said you're not sure. Is it that you're not sure because of the, the traffic volume or, I mean, just design principles? You would be sure that it would be safer to align them, is that right?
Well, yeah, if, if we were here with a blank slate and this site plan for Jane Center were before you, I would absolutely say, let's align them.
And, and it's safer to align them?
Well, I, I can't say that now because if there haven't been any accident patterns that have been repeating at this location, then that suggests that there's not a safety problem. So we can't simply allege that there's a safety problem because there's not an alignment. This is an existing driveway that's been functioning for some time. So if the accident history doesn't show that there's a safety issue, there is no safety issue. If, if there were several accidents because people were turning left out of these successive driveways and colliding, then I would say, you know what, we need to fix this. But that hasn't been the case. And I think that that primarily is because of the operation at Jane Center and the fact that the volume of left turns coming out of that shopping driveway are low.
I would say, I understand exactly what you're saying, that there's no accident pattern. But the accident information is from years where that shopping center was in a decline.
Post-COVID and, and so forth?
And the traffic difference in that shopping center today compared to when those studies were done is like night and day. You have to work to find a parking space in there during the day. It's a different ballgame than it was. Don't you think, though, that has a little bit of an impact?
Sure, and particularly if we're talking about post-COVID. And I, I did not look at all the data that Mitch Aardman presented to the board. So I don't know how far back he went or which years it covered, but there's no question because we weren't performing traffic counts twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, even into early twenty twenty-two because of the whole COVID influence. We were relying on older data. So most certainly, traffic volumes were down, parking demands were down, activity at, at, at centers like this were down. So if, if there's a need to look at more current accidents since the center's been generating more activity, that might be something to look at. I would agree with you.
Right, and just to be clear, you're talking about reported accidents? We're not talking about near misses? They're not counted in the reporting accidents?
Well, yeah, the only way to really study it, of course, is to, because we're not there all the time with eyes on it, yeah.
Right. I think we've heard a lot. What do we want to do here? What was? Or do you feel you're in a position, given the new information, to, to vote? Before we do that, we're going to go to the public, of course, but I want to know.
Maybe I can ask a question. Does the board, does the board feel that you need to know whether it was actually a condition or not?
I do, I do.
I do as well. I mean, just from what I've heard last September and kind of just the back and forth on a number of different issues related to this project, I'd like to have all of our ducks in order, so to speak.
I need the clarity of what transpired before that of the condition to make a sound decision.
Okay, so then what I'll do is, again, I'll do what was discussed before is I'll not only review the resolutions, obviously, that were presented tonight. I'll review the staff reports that were referenced in those resolutions. I'll look at the, the record of the technical review committee to look into the, to the, any approval by the TRC and also the minutes that were involved in those hearings and see if, if there's any reference to that being either a, you know, driveway re-alignment being a condition of an approval or being, you know, if it was mentioned in a staff report, which was referenced in the approval, then I would say that is in a condition then of the board's approval. And I'll report back to the board when this is heard next.
Awesome. Well, is it, are there any members of the public here that just are dying to speak? I want to give you service. I mean, you came. I, I want to state, we're going to ask you to, you know, to carry this. That's going to be our position.
And we will consent to that.
Okay, but I want to also respect the members of the public who've come out. If you want to speak this time, if not, you can withhold your comments until next time. Before you come up, is there a motion from the board to open it up to the public?
So moved.
Agreed.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing the motion carries, go ahead.
If you could just state your name, spell your last name, give us your address for the record, please.
I've lost my voice, so please bear with me. Charag Shah. I live at Five Field Crest Drive in Princeton, New Jersey, part of Somerset and Franklin Township. Hearing this, this is the first time I've gone to one of these, and I found so many flaws that I'm really shocked. You know, one thing that I found that I just told my wife was, I can't believe he asked the board if they were comfortable voting without asking the public if there, if there was anything in having the public speak first. I think that was inappropriate, right? I mean, you're saying already that you've already tabled it, so whatever we say, what does it matter? So the other thing is, there shouldn't be any pedestrians crossing there. There is no pedestrian walk that Franklin has placed. It's, I, I'm from New York City. I'm from Queens. They don't all line up. People look, wait. It's like at a four-stop point. Whoever got there first gets to go first. Near misses, that's insane. How many near misses have you had that you have reported to the police?
I think you're asking the wrong person that question. You should Google me.
I don't Google anybody.
Well, you don't want to ask me that question.
Okay.
All right.
So what I'm saying is, it, that, that's not the right point. What it is, it's up to the individual driver. And when they're at that place, to be aware, what we, what my kids are going to do, who's going to take a permit test and learn? Who has right of way, making sure that you sometimes make eye contact with the other driver and sort of understand that, hey, I'm going this way. I have my signal on. You have your signal on. I've done the left before. I look and we go slower because we're know, we go, we're going that way. But there isn't anything there. And to be honest, I work in the ER at Robert Wood. And I don't really get many of the things from there. I ask them, where did this one come from? Where, I haven't heard much. I asked the cops there, where do, I haven't heard it. But am I saying this is just the way you say, you know, you don't, you know, you don't know in terms of what was reported? And I agree with that. Some of those numbers are flawed and they could be. But this study that she did was post-COVID. And to the other point of, it houses center used. We are not a religion that's like typically every other. We need even, when it's snowing and so forth, we need even one person to do a certain ritual. It doesn't matter, even if one person goes. So just because you have place for that many, doesn't mean you're using that all the time, only on certain special occasions. So, you know, I appreciate the ability to come up and talk to you and sort of speak to you guys freely. But I, I think that everyone needs to sort of get together and sort of figure this out because as a resident living in Franklin, I'm sort of ashamed the way this was going. Because I thought certain things should be expected by a certain date. Like when I have meetings and so forth, some things get put in, you know, whatever, a week, whatever you need. And same with courtesy to the other side. I mean, we see this on lawyer shows and everything, right? You know, did that, I mean, am I wrong? I watch Suits, you know, it's fun, right? So that kind of thing. I think if you work together, I think you'll accomplish more than sort of completely turning off a whole big powerful corner of your society that wants to make your community better.
Thank you.
Can you just spell your name, please, sir, before you leave?
Sorry. S-H-A-H.
I, I think that was a beautiful speech by you. And I also want you to remember that I didn't want to go down this road to begin with. I didn't feel like we had enough information. They decided, we decided collectively to hear the testimony. But from the start, I felt that we should have carried this to the next meeting. So I wanted to save you of seeing the amount of dysfunction that was present because we did not receive things in a timely, timely manner. So that is important to remember. Now that we've gone through this process, I still had the ability to not welcome the public because we didn't go through the official thing. But I still wanted to hear your testimony, which is why I invited you up. So all respect is given, but nothing is without dysfunction. And there is blame to be had on both sides, but we're going to get it right. But we're not going to make a decision without all the facts.
I'm not saying making a decision. I just think being heard before your decision. And I think just giving the public who came here.
Absolutely.
A chance to speak. I just think it's more respectful. Like I said, I've been in Franklin for seventeen years now. This is my eighteenth year. You know, I haven't left, right? Do everything with the kids here, so forth, school, everything. So I think we're trying to make it better. But I think when you see this kind of thing, I think it just puts a very sour taste. That's all.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to address something. You know, I can appreciate you saying, you know, you're from New York. I'm from New York. I, I drive there regularly. So you're a hundred percent right. You know, you look both ways, pedestrian, there's many thousands, hundreds of pedestrians that you have to watch out for. We live in a different town. So that's number one, right? I've lived here many years also. So I do appreciate what you're saying. But the chances of happening here, maybe a little bit more. I think New Yorkers are a little bit wiser. They're more streetwise. They know their car's coming. So I just wanted to make a little comment on that.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, you can't speak. Yeah. All right, anyone else? Anyone else from the public? Public only.
Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close the public session.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing the motion carries. All right, what's the follow-up in terms of date?
So John, the next time that we have a meeting is January seventeenth. Would you be prepared by that or?
Use the mic for me. Use the mic, just.
No, I, I would think that both Mr. Healy and myself will probably want to look into the open issues over a longer period than January seventeenth. Do you? Yeah, what's, what's the, what's the, the next date available? I know February's a little tight, too.
February seventh, I think, is a matter that's also by your firm. The twenty-first is not open to you. The sixth, maybe? March sixth?
March sixth, okay.
Would you like to move to March sixth?
Yes, please.
Okay. So then we'll make the announcement that.
And please make sure that Mr. Aardman comes because he is the person that felt he needed to prepare this plan. We need to know why.
So before we announce the dates, it sounds like that's, well, that's one thing we need to work out. As far as Mitch Aardman, like perhaps, you know, after I look into the record, that may or may not affect whether you need to hear from Mitch Aardman, perhaps?
Yeah.
So what, what I suggest is I'll, after I, you know, do the review, I'll contact Mr. DeLuca and then you can decide whether you feel Mr. Aardman should, you know, would help to, you know, present.
Thank you.
All right, so March sixth isn't, is not available.
What, what was the, I'm sorry, the January seventeenth?
You, you have January seventeenth that, that you can maybe hear on this because you have another matter from your firm that's being heard. So it would be your discretion whether you want to hear that one or this one first?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we can be prepared by January seventeenth. I was trying to be courteous for Mr. Healy's schedule, but.
Okay, so. So then we're moving the Jane Center, New Jersey, PLN twenty-three, zero, 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 one, one, to January seventeenth at seven thirty PM at the Township four seventy-five, Demont Lane, okay? You can give me a, you can give me an extension letter, I think. You can just mail it over to me. And the extension letter should probably, oh, actually, you're, you're good until January thirty-first, so you don't need to. So we have that until there.
And Mark, the board, how will we be notified of what the facts are? We don't want to come here for the next meeting, right? And there'd be a debate about whether or not it was a condition of approval. We would prefer in advance to know.
You'll know in advance. It'll be, it'll be, I'll do some type of report that'll go in your agenda packet.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
And we have another hearing that night anyway, so.
Right. All right. No committee reports. Any new business? I don't see any new business. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing the motion carries. Thank you all.